Good afternoon. I'd like to call the September 10, 2024, School Board Meeting Work Session to Order. First, we have an update on staffing from Dr. Huff.
Good afternoon, Ms. Heffron, Ms. Coker, members of the board, Dr. Murray. I'm happy to be able to share with you this afternoon an update on staffing. And we have a lot of, a lot of good news this year to kick off the 24, 25 school year. All of our classrooms are covered with certified teachers, annual substitutes or long-term substitutes. A little bit more than 95% of our classrooms are currently covered with licensed teachers. Our attrition numbers are preliminary. We should have those final numbers early October, but they are trending lower year over year. So that's a welcome news. And this is the second consecutive school year that we've seen that attrition rate decline. Our vacancy rate for our school-based food service position has continued with reduction. It was 24% in 2022, 13.8% in 2023, and now that's 6.3% in 2024 as of the first week of September. So we've seen a continuous decline there. Our vacancy rate for day porters has continued to improve. They've been reduced vacancies from 5.8% to 3.9 and now 2.8. And our vacancy rate for bus drivers has been reduced. That went from 9.9 to last year to 5.3% this year. And all the routes were covered at the start of school. We also have a healthy pipeline of drivers in training. And another event coming up, October 15th, to continue to capture folks with interest in riding buses. This is a example of our recruiting metrics for bus drivers as of last week. At this state of capture, we had 68 trainee category folks and 13 more in the medical check. There are 43 in a background check, 12 in the offer stage, and another 30 that have been referred for interviews. So those numbers are looking positive. We also are celebrating our daily substitute fill rate. Last year, our average for the year increased to 87%. And that was an increase of about 4% over the prior year and an increase of 22% over pandemic lows. Last week, we were running almost 92% for the week. So we know it's early in the year, but we're really excited about those higher fill rates. We know that's an important working condition for teachers as well as an important pipeline for future full-time employees. Our active substitute pool increased from 2,840 to 3,105 at the end of last year. And we're really proud of that because hitting 3,100 substitutes, which for our size school district was considered right sizing our subpool. It was a three-year goal for us, and so we were really excited to hit that goal. It was a 9.3% increase in one year. And we had about 1,900 more substitutes than at our low point. And our new goal is to maximize our roster earlier in the year. So, you know, we hit that number in June. We're hoping this year to hit that number by the end of October. And then that will allow us to have a right-sized subpool and then to take a look at geographic recruiting, where we might advertise a substitute event through PTAs, for example, if we have, you know, more, a different fill rate in different geography in the county. So we're very excited about our progress there. And it's not just our fill rate, but it's also the experiences that people have when they're substituting and working with our students. And many of them enjoy those experiences and decide to change careers or fill a full-time or part-time role with CCPS. And so you can see from this chart, last school year, we had 253 substitutes who were hired into full-time or part-time positions. And most of those were hired into teaching positions, 103. And then 85 hired into either annual substitutes or virtual course facilitator positions. Another 34 into instructional assistant positions. And then a variety of other support staff. So that's really important, important pipeline for us for full-time and part-time positions. And you can see this year, this chart is only showing July and August data. So already this year, we've hired 186 people who were serving as day-to-day substitutes, to-be teachers, annual substitutes, instructional assistants. And finally, this chart shows the last 14 months, so the 23, 24 school year, and also July and August of this school year. And you can see that the number of teachers is higher. And so what, what we have here is people who moved into a role like instructional assistant or annual substitute and then subsequently moved into teaching roles. So it's kind of created a career pathway for people to, you know, get exposure to classroom work and then maybe decide that they are interested in that full-time and then get into a licensure pathway and work their way into a teaching position. So we're encouraged by that. The retention has been high. And we do see people kind of progressing through those career paths. And we do have a lot of events where we advertise those events to our substitute pool, career switcher events, and to learn, you know, about different aspects of, of teaching. Some innovations and things that we're trying. Handshake is a software that most of the colleges and universities are utilizing now. And we have interacted with a lot of candidates on this software. So this is how candidates know that you're coming to their campus and you can connect with them if they're interested in your school division. We sent messages this year that reached over 59,000 unique candidates. We are not only messaging teacher education candidates, but also candidates in content majors that may be, you know, interested in career switching or becoming a teacher or could easily pass a content assessment and may be interested in pursuing licensure. So we had a 35% increase in the number of candidates we reached out to. Of those, almost 3,700 candidates engaged with us, and that was a 26% year-over-year increase. I Teach is an online asynchronous certification program. It is accredited by the Council of Accreditation of Educator Preparation, or CAPE. And that's an opportunity where people who are working full-time, this might meet their schedule where they can work through their certification coursework. It offers praxis test preparation as part of the program. They get access to 90 days of praxis preparation in addition to the content and the pedagogy offered through the course. We've hosted multiple events for annual substitutes, substitutes and career switchers. We have another event coming up. This one's going to be focused on EL, and that's coming up on September 17 at Midlothian High School. And we are supporting the cost of an I Teach cohort through Title II grant funding, excuse me, for math, EL, special education, and elementary certification areas. And that's on a first-come, first-served basis. We've had 84 people who expressed interest that looked like they are potentially eligible. There are a few ancillarys, like a GPA requirement. We have 76 people who are ready to start. And that includes 15 in math, two virtual facilitators in math are interested, 13 in ESL, 35 elementary, seven special ed-adapted, and 14 special ed-general candidates. And we still have a few slots left, so we're still advertising and having events. But we're hopeful that that will allow people who are enjoying working with our students to progress into these full-time roles and renewable licenses. Also, Participate International Exchange. I know you're familiar with this. This is our second year participating in this program. It's Participates Learning is the largest provider of international teacher exchange programs in the U.S. They work primarily in Virginia, North Carolina. And they've placed about 750 teachers this year. And they've been operating in cultural exchange programs for over 37 years. They only take the top 3% of their applicants because they only have 750 of these exchange visas. And the teachers can stay for up to five years. And they have over 21,000 applicants from 35 countries. So it's a pretty selective program, and we were excited to welcome our teachers this year. The teachers are experienced. They have to have a minimum of two years of experience. Most have many more. And they are licensed and they are eligible for the Virginia International Teacher License as well. And they've engaged in training related to cultural differences relative to teaching in the United States. They've been interviewed and selected by our principals. They're interviewed virtually. They've traveled here on a J-1 visa. They can stay up for five years. And the average stay is 4.1 years through this program. So they really have a chance to become part of our school, part of our community, and engage in that cultural exchange. The program is through the Department of Labor, so it does require a couple of cultural exchange activities each year. And then it is a requirement that they return to their home country at the end of the program to exchange what they've learned. Some advantages of this is our students will become more knowledgeable about the world and its cultures, languages, and people, which prepares them to lead and excel in a global marketplace. Our schools who are participating volunteered, and they were selected without regard to socioeconomic status. So we're, we're bringing the world to our students. We know that other divisions have had positive outcomes with student learning. And we know that this also helps to meet needs with the teacher shortage. Our teachers are eligible to teach elementary, EL, or Spanish. Some people are eligible in more, more than one area. And some teachers are traveling alone. Some are bringing a spouse or families with them. We are now at two total of 55 ambassador teachers. We welcomed 30 last year and 25 this year. We have 12 countries represented, so you can see them listed there. This year, we welcomed teachers from Belize, Kenya, and Spain for the first time. And you can see here a list of our elementary, middle, and high schools who are participating in this exchange program. And shortly, we'll be getting ready to survey schools again for the following year to see who might wish to participate. There are a lot of supports provided through this program. Participate Learning provides online instruction on how to adjust instructional strategies for the U.S. There's a week of arrival orientation in Washington, DC. And this year, we were excited to be able to go up and present a segment of that to just our teachers, what to expect when you, you know, come to Chesterfield and onboarding specifically for Chesterfield. We were able to welcome teachers this year as they came in at Reagan International Airport the day after the Microsoft glitch, so that was exciting. And we, they participated in CCPS New Teacher Week with some specially-designed breakout sessions. They have school-based mentors. They have local advisors who this year are the first-year teachers who've just been through the acclimation process the year before. And they also have an annual conference that's held on a weekend in DC that Participate Learning provides. So this is a lot of opportunities for us for cultural exchange and change, and exchange in teaching strategies, as well as for student achievement. Our students, many of our students are now having the opportunity to learn Spanish, for example, from a native speaker. Our English learners are working with some ESL teachers who are multilingual and have had the experience of, of learning other languages. So that's exciting, and we do expect lifelong memories from this program as well. Some other continuous improvements we're making. We had 61 recruiting events this year. That's a 22% increase over the previous year. We are piloting a paid apprenticeship model. It's an associates-to-bachelors model, and we would end up with a teaching certificate. That's for elementary and special ed. It's through VCU, the Department of Labor, and several other school divisions are participating. That's a new market for us because primarily most of the career switcher markets have been, you know, you already have a bachelor's degree and then pick up the teaching license or a master's degree. So associates-to-bachelors is a new, sort of a new arena for us. Some challenges that we're still facing. Our attrition's improving, but it does remain high in some critical, non-exempt roles, like bus driver and instructional assistant. Of course, we're still in a national teacher shortage, so it is pretty competitive from district to district. And we still have salary competition with our neighbors. The budget timing sometimes is a little bit challenging because the timing of the, the state budget adoption and the timing of when we need to hire teachers to be fully staffed for the new year doesn't always sync up. And we have had some growth due to legislative actions or population. Like last year, there was a reading specialist legislation that passed relevant to that to where we needed to add some reading specialists. And so we're now sponsoring some cohorts in that. And we added some EL teachers this year as well in response to legislation. We offer licensure assistance for candidates, new hires and employees, including annual substitutes, long-term substitutes, and daily substitutes. We had over 30 events last year, plus we have a monthly virtual session from fall to spring. And that just includes help with analysis of transcripts, pathways to licensure, praxis assessment information, tuition assistance, budget permitting. And we include events, school visits, one-to-one phone calls, and emails. We know this is a bigger need now that we're working with more career switchers. And we also help people navigate the different pathways to licensure. So it can be I Teach. It could be eligibility through a major, eligibility through praxis, content testing, a career switcher program that's filed with the Virginia Department of Ed. We try to look at where that person's coming from and what their transcripts already reflect and which pathway might match them. Advantages to achieving licensure. We try to emphasize the salary differences that occur when someone moves, for example, from an annual substitute position to a licensed teaching position. So there is an incentive to become a licensed teacher. And we are now working with both tuition assistance and cohorts. So this is, I mentioned, the I Teach cohort that we're sponsoring. We are also budgeting to help other career switchers towards certification. We have two cohort programs for reading specialists through Longwood University. One started in March. One started this summer. We have two cohort programs planned that are in collaboration with University of Richmond and the EL office, where it's a program for people who are teachers to pick up their EL endorsement and prepare them to pass their praxis tests. And we'll be featuring that at next week's September 17th event at Midlothian High School. We continue to have dedicated fairs for instructional assistants. And this is, it was neither an area of challenge nor an area of success. It stayed stable. I guess we've sustained our success from last year. We have about 96% of these positions filled. We have increased our number of events. We have changed our format of our fairs because we really learned that geography is really important for these positions. People don't want to commute a long way for instructional assistant positions. Many times, they're trying to match their schedule to the schedule of their student. So we are having another event in October. I believe that's coming up on October 7th at Providence Middle School to try to fill those final positions. We are about 96% full. I know many times people ask, where are we recruiting? So I've included a chart here of our external job fairs from spring semester of 2024. And if anyone's watching and wondering how to apply for any of our open positions, we've included our website here and a link, what to include when you apply, as well as our contact information for our recruiters at careers@ccpsnet.net. And why we would like for people to apply? We think every child deserves an outstanding education, and teachers are the most important school-related factor in a child's educational outcomes. Our support positions are critical to ensure that our children can benefit from the classroom environment. And we want to meet this moment of teacher shortage with innovation, continuous improvement, and strategy to ensure that all of our students have an outstanding educational experience.
Thank you, Dr. Huff. Board members, is there any discussion? Any questions? Thank you. Next, we have an update on transportation with Dr. Frye.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board Members. Mr. Roberts, it's my pleasure to give you our update on our Transportation Department. So I'd like to discuss with you today our recruitment process and how that impacts our arrival and efficiencies that we do take throughout the year, bus stop placement, and then let's look ahead. We have a top-notch training department that's in-house here in Chesterfield. I would stack them up against any training department in the United States, frankly. They do a fabulous job. We have a manager of training and safety, three lead trainers, and nine auxiliary trainers. And through their efforts throughout the entire year, last year, they were able to train and we were able to hire from their training 233 drivers. We've already trained, at least when we first started this, 32 drivers. And that number has increased since the writing of this PowerPoint. We want to make sure that our training does not end in the classroom. So we have an extensive mentoring program. We train mentors, experienced drivers, and they go onto routes that are open. And they learn those routes. So that when we have a new driver, that new driver can ride along with this mentor who knows every twist and turn, every bump, and shows the new driver their way around. And when they're comfortable, the new driver takes over. And then it doesn't end there. The minute the mentor then reaches back out to them to make sure that they have a point of contact and any questions. Through the training program and many other aspects, we've been able to achieve a 97% arrival goal, which was our, which was our goal throughout the year. We started off last year at the first reading in, at the end of September at around 95%. By second semester, we were up to 97%. We're hoping by the next time we take a measurement, which will be at the end of September, October, that we'll be back up into the mid-to-upper 90s as well. Now, we are very aware that any late bus impacts our families. So we always dig down into the data to see how we can improve. Of that less than 3% that are late, which represents 4,200 arrivals in a week's period of time, 121 of those, at least in the week of May that we checked, the vast majority of those were less than 10 minutes. Now, we would love to be able to get to 100%. That's, would be the ultimate goal. Unfortunately, there's so many variables out there that are outside of our control. And these are some of them. First of all, a single late bus can impact two to 10 buses or more because they have a domino effect. Bus breakdowns. We do have an aging fleet. 30% of our buses are 15 years and older, and that's become, becoming a greater problem. And when that occurs, we have to send out another bus to pick up those students. Traffic. The traffic you experience getting here on Hull, on 95, all the 288, our buses are in every single day, and that's unpredictable. Driver absenteeism. Ongoing situation in any job. Parent traffic. Many parents elect to take their children to school, which causes a line, and, you know, it's sometimes difficult to get in there. We would encourage our parents to ride the bus. Oftentimes, I see the bus leaving out of the parking lot before the parents can pick up their own children. Vandalism and theft is also a problem that is unfortunate. But when a driver goes to collect their bus, sometimes they felt, they find that something's been done to the bus that slows down the, the process. New drivers. Anytime we do something new, it takes more time. It's not until the drivers become familiar with their students and the routes and the turns 100% that they speed up. Now, the last two things here are things that we do have more control over. First of all, the total distance and number of stops on the route. We have some control over that. Deadhead time and distance between routes. We do have some control over that. And that's where efficiency comes in. Additional impacts on arrival are physical impacts. For example, Bensley, they're in a new school. We're sharing a parking lot, a bus lot, with Fallen Creek. And the challenges of the students leaving the building to get to the buses has been a challenge for the last three weeks. And I'll tell you, the principal's been doing a great job, and there's been improvement every single day. And I'm happy to report that since writing this, that they're getting out there within about 18 minutes, 15 to 18 minutes, which is a significant improvement, which is creating a lot more on-time arrivals in the afternoons. Additionally, there's less time between modified first tier and second tier, 10 minutes difference. So we have to be a lot, a lot faster during that period of time. Also, long routes on second tier, if you think tomahawk, has a very large area that we have to cover, and as a result, it takes a lot longer. So sometimes it's difficult to start a first tier or a third tier. Like I said, efficiency is extremely important in our business. Our buses travel 9 million miles per year. That's once around the earth every single day of the calendar, which is, it's hard to fathom. Therefore, it's essential that we are looking at our routes and stops on a daily, yearly basis. Why do we do this? It's the law. We're required to review our routes for safety, efficiency, fuel economy, and to efficiently use our buses. We also review our bus stops. We must ensure that they're safe. Everybody in the Transportation Department is responsible for this review. It starts with our managers and our routing department. Our bus drivers drive their routes, give feedback. Our parents give feedback. Our training and safety team go out and look at stops. And this is an ongoing process. We don't just do it one time per year. So let's look at the efficiency of both our routes and our bus stops. Efficiency starts with our data. We're very data-driven, especially with the number of riders. The number of students that ride our buses impacts the number of buses and drivers that we need. It also impacts the number of students that we assign to a bus and the number of doublebacks that we have. We get this information from school's database synergy. Parents tell us that their children are going to ride the bus or not. And based upon that, we plan for the year. As the year goes on, though, we use actual ridership data from the scans that the kids do when they get on the bus, so we know exactly who is riding. When we're planning for efficient bus stops, we're looking to minimize the number of stops that are on a route. In doing so, you're reducing the number of times that you're having to slow down, which conserves the fuel, number one, conserves time, and the wear and tear on the bus. When evaluating bus stops, we also take into account, you know, the distance that kids have to walk, the visibility of cars that are on the road coming up to a stop, the number of students that are standing at the stop, features of the roads itself. the number of students that are standing at the stop, features of the roads itself, the location of the residences of the students, and finally, where the students will stand. Things we do not consider are being in the line of sight. Your house is not necessarily in the line of sight of the bus stop. The bus passing a home. We pass a lot of homes to get to a bus stop because we ask students to come to a central location. And also, weather and temperature are also not considered. As we look ahead and plan ahead, we've got to consider the new WHAM school coming onboard in the coming year. This is going to impact transportation significantly. One of the things will be that the middle schools will be redistricted, and the middle schools will all be placed on first tier, including Tomahawk. In order to balance the number of buses needed at each tier, there will need to be some rearrangement of our elementary school on each tier. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Frye. Board members, any discussion?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Frye. I had one, well, I have two questions on here. One was about the double backs. Do we have enough buses to avoid drivers doing that for tier? Follow my, my path here. If tier one and tier two don't have to share the same bus driver, would that help alleviate the potential for later arrivals that we're having with the tier two? If only the tier one and the tier three bus drivers were the same?
I, I think I understand what you're saying, and as long as there's enough, if we plan, as long as there's enough time between the routes, we can do a first, second, and a third and be on time with the time that we have. It's a little bit of a stretch between modified tier because you've got 10 minutes less, but we try to plan for the shortest routes and the schools with the tightest zones in the modified, and then so that we can get to second tier.
And then my second question was regarding the last slide. You addressed the elementary schools having to adjust their tiers. What would you, what would you, what were you envisioning with that?
Well, that's still in the planning stages. But there is a significantly larger number of elementary school buses needed to service all of our elementary schools. Now, ideally, you would want to be able to do each level on a different tier, like middle, high school, and then all your elementary. But it's just not possible. There's way too many. So like we have currently, we have them scattered into modified first and second in order to balance the buses that's needed.
So we don't have enough buses to make that happen, the way you said originally?
Well, it would be buses, drivers. It's also a matter of efficiency. If we had enough buses to where we could handle all of the elementary on one tier, there would be a lot of buses sitting around doing nothing during first and second.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mr. Pronton.
Thank you, Dr. Frye. Two things. One, start of the school year was very hectic, and your team, at least the problems that were presented to me that I partnered with you on, and you directed your team to handle those rather expeditiously. So greatly appreciate the attention to detail and immediate response that our families in the Matoga District received, so thank you for that. The other thing I want to point out, and this was a misconception that I had, that after speaking with you, I learned was not the case, is when you were referring in a previous slide to the trainers, these trainers are also able, or not able, but they do certify. So we're not sending a bus driver candidate out to some third-party CDL organization to get tested, and then they, then they join the ranks. We're doing that internally. And so that was a misconception that I had originally after speaking with you and then understood that, no, we're doing that all in-house because there was some concern about that that was brought up from constituents. So that's why I had asked, but I appreciate, you know, explaining that a little bit further in regards to what we're able to do in-house. So again, a credit to your department. So all that to say, thank you.
Thank you. And just to elaborate on that for folks, yes, they come in, they're tested, they earn their CDL, their learner's permit, they go through all the training. They never really have to step into a DMV, except to actually get the, the card.
I too want to say thank you to your team for Area Four and you as well. There were a few minor things that bubbled up in the Bermuda District, and your team, you know, acted and gave responses back very timely, so I appreciate that. I do have one question in regard to, you mentioned the scanning that the students do when they get on the bus. Can you elaborate a little bit more on that for folks that may not know? I think it's the elementary students that actually scan, but then the older students kind of type their name in or something along?
That's actually correct. They are all, we have tablets that are all integrated into our system. And students will get on the bus, and they're logged onto the bus one of two ways. The driver can tap on their name and picture, when we have pictures, and they're logged. Or if they have a, an express card, formerly an RFID card, it's scanned as they get on the bus. And those express cards are at the elementary school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Frye.
Thank you.
Next, we have an update on the ERP modernization project from Mrs. Aldis. Your pride and joy.
Madam Chair, distinguished board members, CFS staff, thank you for the opportunity to present what I hope is a riveting presentation on the ERP modernization project. I am going to take a moment to step back because I haven't presented to this board as a whole. So if you will allow me a little liberty to jump through a little bit of the history, I'm going to begin with what is an ERP, right? So stands for an Enterprise Resource Planning Tool. And what that is, is it's a software that basically incorporates or enables or facilitates day-to-day operations. Not just your accounting, that's often what we think of, but in this case, also your human capital. So we're talking from hire to retire, right? Everything from performance management, learning, compensation, pay, benefits. Also, on the finance side, we do have budget, accounting, strategic planning, projects, business assets, all the fun things, right? So again, an ERP is more than just a software to run your payroll. It's all things day-to-day operation. And what that does by putting us in sort of a one-stop shop is it creates efficiencies, right? We can an employee, employee's personal information, and it flows all the way through the system. So we're also improving data integrity. We're also gaining greater insights because it can bring all the pieces that it takes to operate a school system together under one umbrella. So in short, that's the basis of an ERP. All right, the case for change. So going back a little bit further, the current system that we're on, that's had several names since I've been here, has been known as IFIS, InFocus, One Solution, Finance Enterprise, it's been called Central Square. Regardless of what you call it, we implemented this in 2008. That is a long time ago for software. We've given it a couple facelifts, but since that time, technology has changed. Our business processes have changed. The size of this school system has changed. So the case for change is that there is new technology out there today that can help us improve our controls in some critical business processes, process areas. So again, the ones I mentioned before, but a quick list. Applicant tracking, compensation, personnel, time and attendance, payroll, procurement, budgeting, assets. In addition to that, we're talking about refining our processes, right? So getting rid of some of the inefficiencies. Think about self-service. We want to put the information in the hands of the people who know it best, and that's our employees. So right now, most of this information that comes into our system are keyed by a very few. And we're between, what, 11,000 and 12,000 employees. Imagine, right? All the key being centralized is really, it's really crazy, actually. So putting that in the hands of the people who know that information best is going to instantly improve our data integrity, right? So the other thing, new technology will enable us to do is actually equitably apply our policies, right? So the system in present-day technology allows for validation or checking of rules behind the scenes where it's no longer someone in payroll being the bad guy telling you can't do that. The system just won't let you, so helps as well. We're going to optimize the effort of staff. We're going to incorporate best practices. Again, this technology was incorporated over 15 years ago. So that's part of our evaluation as we're moving forward. And then again, finally, we're going to increase visibility. So people will have access to their information real time on a device-neutral, we're, we're mobile-enabling, so that, again, if something is wrong, they can initiate the fix as opposed to having to complete a paper form and send it in centrally. Okay, again, just another sort of high overview of this project. It is sponsored, it's really both, it's a dual effort between county and schools. Again, we've been in, in this current system for over 15 years. We're going to support HR and finance functions. It is a high-priority project for both county and schools. It was the top five of the technology projects on the county's portfolio. The initial funding was appropriated in 2024. I believe it was a 13 million, 13 million dollar appropriation. Might have been 12, 12 to 13 million dollar appropriation. And then the selection process, we went through a pretty robust RFP process on this where in August of 2023, we decided on a joint effort between Accenture, the consultants, implementation consultants, and Workday. So that sort of brings us to the project team. And quick overview of the project team, sponsored by Matt Harris, the county deputy administrator. Consuela Wilson, the director of accounting, is the project director. Under her, we have project management as well as change management. And on the project management side, we have representation from both schools and county, as well as IST, which is primarily county, although we do have IT representation on our steering committee side. On the change management side, it's myself and Kevin Rooney over at the county. But in addition to that, we recently completed what we're calling the CANZ Campaign, Change Ambassador Network, where currently I have 204 unique employees across the school system that will be my boots on the ground. We have between two and three representatives at each location, school or department, to help. And then not, last but not least, the steering committee. And I won't read the list to you, but I will mention for the folks in here, the CFO, Bob Meister, as well as Dr. Huff, are on, as well as Aaron Ford, are on the steering committee team. One of the first activities that we did as a new project was to establish the vision and the goals. But basically, it's just to reiterate the things I've already shared with you, right? We're going to look to enhance our access, our transactions through automated, device-neutral, self-service processes to improve efficiency, data-driven decisions for both county and schools. I'll just pause and let you go. I don't need to read those to you, but I think I've said them all. But if you have any questions about those, they're here for your reference. Since we kicked off, there have been four, four or five key decisions. They do actually have impact. First, we have off, decided to go with the Big Bang implementation. Initially, we had two phases, the HCM or the human capital phase in one, and the finance phase in the second. There was a three-month delay between the implementation of the two. We have decided to go with the Bing-Bang. There were several reasons. One, with the HCM implementation first, that would have required an integration with our current system for three months. Designing an integration is quite complex, and so it would have been a very heavy lift. In addition to that, that was compared against the fact that our payroll parallel testing was going to begin during the holiday months, December and January, and we know how that goes. So a little reality check that maybe that wasn't the best time to expect folks to be not taking any time off because once we start the parallel testing, it's, it's go time. And then finally, the, the other positive for that decision was to actually allow more time for the parallel payroll testing. That is without a doubt where we will focus our greatest energy is to ensure that our folks are paid accurately. The other big decision was the separation of business processes. What I mean by that is in Workday, what you have, the system itself, it is what it is. We cannot customize that system. However, what we design outside of the database are things called business processes. And those business processes can be configured. And what an example would be the routing of a workflow or the next step in a process. And through our business process assessment, we, it was very quickly evident that we are two very different businesses, right? The way that we operate at schools is very different than the county operates. And because of that, it made sense to actually separate some of our processes because they take different journeys, different approvals are required. Now, where we could, and mostly on the finance side, we will leverage similar processes. Where we can, we are definitely going that route. But where we deviate, we have decided to take a different approach to designing those business processes. Post-production support model. What we're talking about there is our ability to maintain the system going forward. Presently, we rely very heavily on the county, which has its advantages and its disadvantages. One of the missions that I personally feel strongly about is that we should be self-autonomous in our management of the system and be able to make those decisions without additional layers of having to ask for help to implement changes. So not that we won't leverage them where we can, wherever it makes sense, but we want that autonomy to be able to maintain our, our business processes. Things change quickly at a school system. I can give a conversation I had just up there a few minutes ago between ESAR-funded tutoring and now all-in funded tutoring, and how that impacts and our need to be able to pivot quickly. So another big decision that's out there is digital signatures. We are going towards digital signatures. The question now becomes DocuSign versus Adobe Sign. County has Adobe, we have DocuSign. What we're evaluating now, it's a cost-benefit. Where can we get the biggest bang for our buck? Both of them require licenses. We have lots of processes that require signature. So that's just a cost-benefit analysis taking place. And then finally, we have decided to table the inventory module. Inventory being very different than business assets. If I were to describe the difference, business asset, you have something that's fixed, it stays around. It might get checked out and checked in, but the asset exists. Versus inventory is more of the consumables, right? So you're handing Band-Aids, you're using paper, that sort of thing. Where we saw the biggest potential for this to improve our processes would be in our trades or our fleet or our warehouse. But in today's environment, those functional areas had already leveraged new technology, newer technology, and they have a system in place. And for the lift that was going to be required to integrate multiple different inventory systems, it just didn't make sense for right now. So those are the big decisions since kickoff. I thought it was going to be quick, but I'll speed it up a little bit. But would like to talk to you a little bit about the milestones that we have done so far. Again, we started this in two phases. Phase one was HCM, and I'll rattle them off for you again. Compensation, benefits, absences, payroll, time tracking, recruiting, talent management, and learning. So where we, where we are with this currently, we've already done the business process evaluations. evaluations, the opportunity for best practices. We have done, um, customer confirmation sessions, where we internally are actually doing the demonstrations to some typical end-users to show them using our data. So we have built a tenant, by tenant, I mean an environment, where we are actually demonstrating this system now, um, with our own data. We have also completed the first round, the highest-level round of architect and design, and kicked off unit testing. By unit testing, what I mean is it's a little bit of a silo testing, not my favorite, but to kind of move the needle forward, payroll's testing, time tracking is testing, compensation is testing. Eventually, we will move to end-to-end testing, which takes the transaction from beginning to end. But that is not where we are at this juncture. Phase two kicked off, uh, not too terribly long ago, and it is on, um, it's on hyperdrive. So we, uh, we have done the VPA kickoff, the day-in-the-life sessions. We have, um, done our, uh, business opportunity readout. Uh, we have begun architect and design. We have identified a key inventory of reports. And then, um, we are currently designing the test scenarios for unit testing in phase two. So it is very quickly catching up with phase one. On the change management front, we have had several workshops where we identified stakeholders, both phase one, phase two. We've done the CANS campaign, which I mentioned. Um, we sat a vendor table at the principal retreat that was pretty well received. We also set a vendor table at the professionals, office professionals, which was in the same week, and that was very well received. They've actually asked us to come back, which bodes very well, because that, those are my boots on the ground. Um, not my power-power users, but my mid-level power users, and they are super excited, which is exactly what I need. Um, and then we kick off this Change Ambassador Network in October, so that's right on the horizon. Finally, DGWs, an integration DGW, stands for Data Gathering Workbook. And what we are doing is iterative dumps of our current data into the new system, new environments, validating that data and then testing that data. We have already done the third, um, data dump of our HCM data, while we're working on the third one. And we are also in the process of delivering our finance data. The first load of that should be by the end of this week, I believe. That was a mouthful. And I know this isn't riveting, that was a little sarcasm. Okay, ERP implementation timeline, the big picture. Okay, so Anne's, Anne's excited with me, but I can't, I'm not sure I've got everybody else still, so, um, we can chat afterwards. Um, this is the big-picture timeline, and, uh, the dotted line is where we are right now. So if you think about it, we're about forty-five weeks in, I think that's on the next slide. Yeah, we're forty-five weeks in, but we have fifty-four weeks to go, or forty-three weeks until we implement. And that doesn't count the RFP that was, I think, a year-plus before this. So, it's been a long go. Uh, things are going pretty well. I'm not going to say it's perfect. We've got some bumps in the road. But, um, I'll, on this detailed one, I'm not going to bore you with the details, other than I just want to share that the testing that we're doing now still really falls under the umbrella of architect and design, because what we're doing, again, in that unit testing, is trying to perfect that functional area as a whole before we introduce it into the end-to-end, where it flows from one functional area to another. Our go-live anticipation date is July, uh, July one of twenty twenty-five. So, um, with that, I will pause for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Aldis. Board members, any questions? Go ahead, Anne.
I don't have any questions. Um, I'm just so happy. I'm happy for you, I'm happy for the HR team, I'm happy for the county, that we are here, we're working on
It is exciting.
A new software that's going to be so much more beneficial for everybody.
Yes.
I know right now you are in the midst of a very, very hard lift.
Little.
Been there, done that, so, um, yes, it's, your hours are very few, and you have a lot of work that you have to, you're doing double work, really. You're keeping the system going, but also testing over here to make sure.
The buzz on the, uh, the wheels on the bus turning, right?
Yes.
Yes, but it is exciting. It's very exciting. I was testing right before coming to this meeting, and I was almost late coming here, because the testing is so exciting, right?
Yeah, and, and important, so.
And very important, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations, this is incredible. Um, July, we're very excited for. So, I just have a, a question with these, uh, someone in each school, right?
Mm-hmm, two to three people in each.
Two to three, okay. Is that their information input, or is it just like a, a, a test, or is it like?
So this Change Ambassador, now, what is the purpose of it? So, the idea is, we've done our best, God bless you. We have done our best to put ourselves in everyone's shoes, right? To anticipate the challenges, the needs, et cetera, based on what we see, our purview. But we don't know everything, and we recognize that we don't know everything. So these are the voices of the people who are boots on the ground. And we're going to bring them in to actually work in this system alongside us, be part of that testing, be part of the training material, develop. They're not going to be asked to develop the training material. They're going to be asked to vet the training material, so that we are speaking their language to their audience, so that we meet those needs. Um, but they're also, we're also taking volunteers if they want to train. I have a couple people who've actually said, "Pick me, I would love to be a trainer," right? And so, I love those people, and, um, we are going to use as many people as are willing.
And that will help also with the changeover, because
One hundred percent.
Yeah, you getting by it, exactly. So that's really smart.
So that, um, that, that, uh, meeting with the professionals, those are my go-tos at a school, right? And they wanted me to come back again. They are ready for, uh, I think I'm, we're going back in October for their next meeting, so that they can learn more. And, um, it, it was great. And I now have data, their data, that I can
Show and tell.
They can touch and feel. They get a sense that, oh, this is better. And so the more that they are convinced that this is going to be better, the easier my job will be.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Dominique.
I was just going to say, um, I've been through that, so I feel your, your pain
Feel my pain.
On, on changing into an ERP. Um, I would just recommend "The Iceberg Is Melting" by Dave Cotter. Cotter's eight-change-step, uh, step process for change management. I used to teach a block of that
Okay.
for DA civilians, and it was very helpful for our change ambassadors to fully understand what they're going to see when they meet the disgruntled person, who doesn't want to let go of the old thing. So, we're with you in spirit, but I really don't want to do that again.
Yes, it does, um, "The Iceberg Is Melting" use the Adcar model, do you know? Because that's, we are, uh, I'm a couple books in to Adcar, but I will, I will add to it. Okay, I do like pictures, yes.
Thank you so much, Ms. Aldis.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
I don't know where you're, everyone embraces change all the time, it's chatters.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Uh, next, we have an update on CIP and construction projects from Mr. Carson.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm, uh, pleased to provide you our September update on major maintenance and CIP work performed over the last few months. We're going to start right away with major maintenance, a lot of success this summer. A lot of expenditures, as you see. We like to start with this slide to show you our success in spending money over the previous five years. It's said sort of tongue-in-cheek, but there is a lot of work to do across the district, as you know. And, you know, my team and, uh, and the expertise of others is really being put to use in, uh, addressing a lot of deferred maintenance. So, um, we start small this year at one point five million, and we'll likely spend up to twenty million dollars this year on deferred maintenance. Um, some of our major work this year, we, well, we came to you in June, and we told you we were going to do a bunch of things, and I'm happy to report that, well, we have done or continue to do them. Roof restoration across the district, highlighting a few of our sites here, various districts. Uh, major roof reconstruction, some of our projects taking multiple years to do, in the case of Meadowbrook High School. Um, we've just completed, uh, that piece of work, among others. Uh, building envelope work, it's not just the roofs that are leaking. Sometimes it's our exteriors as well, our brick, masonry, windows, window frames, et cetera. So, um, a lot of work across the district in this endeavor as well, even with some of our newer buildings, too. Um, it does happen there as well. Uh, entrance vestibules, the, I would say, the premier major maintenance project of the summer, except for all of the other ones. But, um, thirty-eight vestibules over three phases of work, we are not yet fully complete. There are four yet to be done, but we will have this all wrapped up here in the, uh, in the fall of twenty-four. But, um, one of our charges from Dr. Doherty in the past was, "Make them look like they were supposed to be there." So, oftentimes, you won't even know that they're done, but you'll just walk into a secure vestibule across the district. So we're coming to close on this one. Um, EMC is Electronic Message Centers, um, largely funded through the District Improvement Fund initiatives. Um, doing several dozen of these, focusing around the district. And, um, I think we have three scheduled for installation this week, um, as well, using the Watchfire program. Mega trailers, again, one of our major initiatives this summer, under the Major Maintenance Initiative. Uh, Clover Hill Elementary, Woolridge Elementary, Swift Creek Elementary, and the Chesterfield Virtual School, which just received certificate of occupancy on Friday. Um, and they are in there and fully moved in with polished and beautiful floors today. So, um, they are up and running, and we're, we're very happy that, uh, that they are in their new home. Flooring and surfacing, again, across the district. Um, here I'm showing Meadowbrook, Carver Middle, and Sikla, um, getting a new gym floor, cafeteria floor. Um, these things, they wear over time, and we're happy to replace them as they, as they need it. So, paving and surfacing, uh, big efforts, usually a half-million to a million dollars' worth is spent um, each summer, paving and surfacing our drives and roads, or building new, as is the case with Providence Elementary School, where we actually added parking uh, for the faculty and staff there, um, bit of a traffic crunch. But, um, got a lot of work done there this summer as well. Okay, CIP, here's the, uh, the, the larger spend, and some of the, uh, the more exciting projects that we've been doing, or have recently completed, as is the case of Falling Creek Middle School. You were all there, I saw you, you cut the ribbon, um, we had a great time. And, um, you know, we're closing this project out. It's a wonderful new, uh, largest middle school in central Virginia, as you've all heard. But it's being followed on the heels by the Western Area Middle School, which will be open next August, which will be, well, one of two of the largest middle schools in central Virginia, following pretty much the same footprint. But we are tracking very, very well for substantial completion late in the spring, and obviously, opening our doors here in August of twenty-five. Okay? Davis Elementary School, another project that'll be open in the, in August of twenty-five. Making tremendous progress with a great contractor there, Cambridge Construction. You know, build, building this on the, uh, the back of the site of the existing Davis Elementary School. Not without a few quirks here and there, it's sometimes challenging to do this. But we are, again, tracking for next summer. Um, just want to point out the budget here at sixty million dollars for one elementary school. You may think that's a bit high, but that does reflect the federal money that we received and are happy to spend, um, for this project, which requires the use of Davis Bacon wage rates, which tend to drive up our, our cost in accounting. So, um, you'll notice that's a bit higher than Bensley Elementary School, which, um, we have just inked the contract on. We are going to have our pre-construction meeting next week, and you all, all participate in a groundbreaking on September twenty-fifth at ten-thirty a.m. Get your shovels ready. But this is a fifty-two-million-dollar full budget, a little bit less than Davis, as I had pointed out. Uh, moving back over to the western portion of the county, where we are seeing tremendous growth. I've already spoken about the middle school. Uh, that is clustered in the Upper Magnolia Green area with the West Area Elementary School and the Western Area High School, which are all in various phases of design, bidding, and construction. But this is our little context map that we like to show. Talking about West Area Elementary, we'll have a board memo for you to consider about this one uh, later this evening at our, uh, our formal meeting. But again, same design as Davis Elementary School, and we plan to be underway here in a few short months, and opening the doors here in August of twenty-six. Western Area High School, uh, probably the biggest thing we've ever built here in the county, or are soon to build. Uh, twenty-four hundred students, you know, over three hundred thousand square-foot high school, working with StanTech architects, getting a couple of shots of the interior and exterior design. We are fully into the construction document phase here, and hope to have this project out for bid in December here of two thousand twenty-four, and having a groundbreaking sometime in the spring of twenty-five. Very excited about this one. And then the rest of our CIP program, um, everything pretty much on the left here is, is well underway. Um, starting to creep into the right a little bit with the Western Area High School in the fourth column over from the left. But, um, but this graphic represents the entirety of our current capital improvement program, um, for the next few years. So, uh, that's the end of my slides. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you, Mr. Carson. Board members, any questions?
Yes.
Mr. Pronto.
Davis Elementary School is sixty million dollars. Bensley is fifty-two million. Western Area Elementary is fifty-two million. Why is it eight million dollars more?
Right, so at Davis Elementary, we've accepted twenty-five million dollars in ARPA funding um, to help build that, that facility. That is federal money that carries along with that federal terms and conditions. So we have to pay the Davis Bacon wage rates, which are a little bit higher, a little bit more accounting involved, a little bit more paperwork on the contractor's side, which elevates, you know, anywhere between seven and ten percent, or maybe a little bit more of the, uh, the construction contract value.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Well, I want to say just congratulations on the vestibules. I have walked into schools and thought, "Oh, there's a vestibule here, I didn't"
Enjoy the work.
"Is this new?" So yes, uh, excellent execution of the vision. Well done, thank you. Next, um, sorry, next we have a presentation on Continuous School Improvement Plan from Dr. Gervais.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Murray, I'm, I'm excited to be in front of you today and talk about the Continuous School Improvement Process here in Chesterfield. Oops, excuse me. All right, today's presentation will include an overview of the Continuous School Improvement Process, along with the alignment of our process to the Virginia Continuous Improvement Model and Support Framework. I will also share the accreditation status of schools based on the current state accreditation system and the types of differentiated and targeted support we provide each school as they work towards innovation and improvement to support the learning of all students. Chesterfield County Public School leaders are committed to the Continuous School Improvement Process. This commitment is reflected in our school leadership playbook, which is designed to guide school-based leaders in six essential practices, one of which is the Continuous School Improvement Process. The practice of school improvement requires school leaders to engage in an ongoing cycle of inquiry and analysis of data in order to understand and uncover the root cause of a problem. Once identified, teams sets goals, teams set goals, create action plans, and begin the implementation of a plan. At regular intervals, teams assess their progress and make changes when necessary. This continuous cycle is called the PDSA cycle, Plan, Do, Study, Act. And it provides schools with a systematic process to understand which strategies result in improvement and how to adapt those strategies at scale. Our process of continuous improvement mirrors the Virginia Department of Education's model, which was shared with divisions in the spring of twenty twenty-four. As you can see here, the model requires a team approach to the improvement process. Schools tap into their collective expertise in their building to build a team who will contribute to the shared goal of student learning. This team works together to identify priority, priority areas, select research-based interventions, develop a plan to support implementation, and evaluate the outcomes. The PDSA cycle in motion. In order to capture the work of Continuous Improvement Process, schools are required to create a Continuous Improvement Plan for the Standards of Quality of the Code of Virginia. In our division, we recognize a need for not only improvement, but but also innovation in how schools plan for student success. Therefore, our schools use a Unified School Innovation and Improvement Plan, which we refer to as a SIPSIP. Currently, schools create a three-year SIP plan as research tells us that complex change takes time. While the plan provides schools with an opportunity to engage in long-range planning, school teams refine their plans annually. Typically, in the summer, school teams come together to analyze their student outcome and implementation data from the previous year and study the impact and effectiveness on their action steps. This study phase allows schools to make iterative changes that are responsive to the needs of their students and staff before they begin implementation. Our schools are currently in the third year of their three-year plan. While we, as a division, work to provide support to our schools in the continuous improvement process, the Office of School Quality at the Virginia Department of Education provides divisions with support and resources to guide the process. Earlier this year, along with a continuous improvement model, the VDOE announced a support framework you see here. This framework highlights four critical domains necessary for every student to receive an exceptional education: academic, organizational, learnings, staffing, and school climate supports. In response to the release of the support framework and in an effort to continuously improve ourselves, the Department of School Improvement made one adaption to the SIP plan this year, the inclusion of a section for school teams to identify strategies to hire, retain, and support school staff. With this addition, our division plans are now aligned to the Virginia Support Framework. The other three domains were already included in SIP plans. Goals one and two for each school are centered around academic supports in the areas of English, math, and science. Goal three is designed to capture the work of school climate and engagement. And finally, all schools have a professional learning plan aligned to their SIP goals. Now we're going to move into the accreditation status. Last month, Dr. Fox shared with you the upcoming revisions to the current state accreditation system, which will provide schools with two ratings, accreditation and performance. While this new system is based on '24, '25 data and will impact the designation of our schools in '25, '26, this year, schools received an accreditation rating based on the single-state accreditation system. Therefore, our '24, '25 accreditation ratings are singular and represent student performance in '23, '24. In response to this current status, schools will continue implementing year three of their SIP plans. For the '25, '26 school year, schools will begin a new cycle of planning for improvement and innovation that will reflect that new performance framework. As you can see on this slide, 53 of our 64 schools that receive an accreditation status are fully accredited. Eleven schools are accredited with conditions. Accreditation is currently based on school quality indicators in academic achievement, achievement gaps, and student engagement and outcomes. Schools that are accredited have all school quality indicators in either the Level 1 or Level 2 range. Schools that are accredited with conditions have one or more school quality indicator in the Level 3 range. In '23, '24, we had 60 schools that were fully accredited and four schools that were accredited with conditions. The increase in the number of schools with the accredited with condition status this year is not because school performance levels have dropped. In fact, the number of schools with a level school quality indicator decreased from 18 schools last year to 15 schools this year. The reason for this change in the accreditation status is because 50 of our schools came off the state triennial waiver in '23, '24 school year. Triennial waivers were given to schools if they had three consecutive years at the accredited status. It is unclear if a similar waiver system will be included in the new state accreditation and performance framework. So the first part of this presentation focused on how schools engage in the continuous improvement process, and next we'll look at our support for schools as they engage in that process. All schools in Chesterfield County receive ongoing and multifaceted professional learning from all division departments throughout the year, beginning with our Leadership Academy in June. Schools also receive technical assistance in plan development and implementation along the way. Two areas of division learning opportunities that I wanted to highlight were our Leadership PLC foundational session this summer and our PLCs at work, which we will continue to support our schools throughout the year in our principal meetings. For our schools with a Level 1 school quality indicator or schools with a Level 2 school quality indicator, division leadership will provide targeted feedback on their plan development and supports the school in progress monitoring the implementation and impact of their plan. Schools also receive support from division specialists throughout the year, and then a final opportunity to meet, reflect, and plan for next year, engaging in that PDSA cycle. Additionally, those schools that have one or more Level 2 school quality indicators in academic achievement in math, English, or science will participate in a required Virginia Department of Education academic review process. This process is designed to examine school artifacts to determine the effectiveness of the systems and practices in building to support teaching and learning. Finally, the division provides a more targeted support for our schools that have one or more Level 3 school quality indicator. For example, in addition to the support that all schools receive, our schools with a Level 3 school quality indicator will receive feedback on their SIP plans from multiple division departments. This feedback review process allows division leaders to provide specific feedback on action steps and also allows them to identify areas of support for each school. The division team will also meet with targeted schools every six weeks to monitor implementation and impact of the SIP plan and to engage in problem-solving and support conversation. Finally, our next steps. As we move forward, our next steps for supporting schools in the continuous improvement process include providing that differentiated and targeted support that has been just shared. We will continue to collaborate with the Department of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation to share preliminary views of the new school performance framework and its impact. And we will also continue to update systems and structures to reflect that new performance measurement system. And that's it. Do you have questions for me today?
Thank you, Dr. Gervais.
Thank you.
Board members, any questions, any discussion?
Not the answer right now, but I would like to know the 11 schools that are accredited with conditions.
Absolutely. I'll send that to you.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Pronto.
Yes, thank you. Slide 16, the coaching conversations, sounds good. What does that actually mean?
So every... Let me go back to... Is this slide 16? For coaching conversations, they not only happen at the six-week mark where we're going in to support a school through this process. What happens is we have an hour designated of school division support specialists. We divide up into three teams to focus on the three different goals that a school has. We analyze their student data, their evidence of student learning. We also analyze their impact of their implementation of action steps to making sure that what they've put in their plan is actually happening. And then in the interim between those six-week meetings, we meet with school teams. We talk about their action steps. We talk about their data analysis process. We help them create data summaries. We help them think through that PLC, professional learning community, structure, where they're really asking the questions, "Are students making progress? And if so, how do we know? And if not, what are we doing in response to that?" So that coaching is side-by-side coaching at times. It's also team coaching. So it looks different depending on the needs of each school. And so we really try to be responsive to each school's individual needs in those conversations.
So I appreciate that. So the coaching conversations are not just, "Hey, we think you should be doing this. Go ahead and give it a try. Maybe you could follow back up, maybe not..." These are followed-up action items that are focused, pointed to help grow whatever that area is that's not up to par.
We think of it as collective leadership. We're working together with them. It's not our action steps that were directed towards them. It's helping them define what their students need and then making sure they have the support to implement whatever those action steps are that we have co-created together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Dr. Gervais.
All right, thank you.
Next, we have announcements, communication, and school board comments. Any announcements or comments, school board members? The next school board business meeting will be held this evening, September 10, 2024, at 6:30 p.m. here in the public meeting room. If there's no further public business, we will enter into closed session, which will be held in the PMR conference room. Madam Clark, would you please announce the items for today's closed session?
It is my understanding that the school board desires to enter into closed session in accordance with Section 2.2-3711(a) of the Code of Virginia, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and specifically under subsection 1, the Discussion and Consideration of Perspective Candidates for Employment in Personnel Disciplinary Matters, and 2, the Discussion and Consideration of Student Disciplinary Matters in matters that would involve the disclosure of student records.
Members of the board, you've heard the items requested to be discussed in closed session. Do I have a motion in that regard?
I make a motion, enter into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clark, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters.
Aye.
Stephen Pronto.
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens.
Aye.
Anne Coker.
Aye.
Dot Heffron.
Aye. We are now in closed session.